Several different access points, egress points for the project. And the building elevations you see here, the high side where you see the Wiggy Wash sign on that onion-type structure, that is the center street side. So the high point of the structure is to the north along Center Street away from the residential zones. Landscape plan, two slides here for the landscape. The area you see in gray, those are areas that will be landscaped. And the next slide does show the planting plan for the landscaping. Any questions at this time?
High is it on the Center Street side?
Excuse me?
You know how high the building?
How high? Twenty? I've written in the staff report, I don't have it written down here. It didn't make a point.
I was just thinking, consideration of what the height, eight feet, right?
Eight feet on the residential side. And when you have a commercial adjacent to residential, the setback of the building has to be equal to the height. And the south end of the building here is probably seventy to eighty feet from the residential side. It's quite a distance.
But that's a, it's a seven-foot masonry wall, and then because of the ele- kicking it to approximately eight where the resident-
Right. The seven foot is taken from the Wiggy Wash side, the curb where the curbing of the parking lot is located. And it does drop down a foot or so to the residential. So it will be higher on the residential side.
It says it's thirty foot six, seventeen six on the residential side.
Gotta have a lot of clean cars in the city, shouldn't we, with the police-
We're gonna have three now.
Is there any feeling for which one of these ingress and egress spots will get used more?
I'd have to defer that to Paul.
Paul, you got any thoughts on that?
Depends on whether you're coming from Vineyard or my area. I mean, if I'm coming from where I live, because Supersonic is too full, I'm gonna come in at the signal. And I'm gonna go in from that direction. If you're coming in kind of down the hill on the Center Street side, down toward the Vineyard area, you're probably gonna just come in. And before you get to the signal, you're gonna get into that deceleration lane and make the right turn in. Either one of those scenarios, there's a very long stacking distance to be able to get into the queue for the car wash.
Seems like the, down at the bottom, the entry in the bottom, it wouldn't be obvious to me. If I was westbound, it wouldn't be obvious to me to go in there through that spot. I mean, eventually, if I was a customer, I'm sure I would learn that. But I don't know that I'd know that right-
Yeah. And the first time, it might be a little confusing, but I think that's one of the reasons why the sign's out there, so that you can see it from way down the street.
True.
Hopefully, by the second time, everybody will know which direction to-
That bottom driveway's gonna be the busiest. You can drop your wife off at Target and wash the car. That's what it's gonna be about.
I have a question on the, coming in the right turn off of Center. Is that two lanes going, yes, is that two lanes going south?
That's one lane where Dave has the red mark. That's one lane going to that point. Now, when you get to that wider area, it kind of opens up to two lanes. But then, the northbound lane will be able to go and pull into the parking lot for the future-
The future development, right? Yeah. They're not gonna be able to go all the way out.
Yeah. Dave has drawn the arrow right there. That's on the wider section, it's two-way until you get to that point, and then you're forced to make a right turn.
Thanks.
That's gonna be quite busy with that, even with that exit that's further back to the west there, because that backs up quite a bit in front of Target. You know, I mean, Center Street's gonna be a busy street. But I mean, it is what it is.
And again, we did widen. We've already widened with help from the developer. We've widened that access there. Now, we're gonna have three exit lanes coming out of the signal onto Center Street instead of two exit lanes. Also, the inbound lane is much wider than it was. So it, that access meets current standards a lot better, and I think is gonna be able to handle a lot more traffic than it has in the past.
It's like a, it's a commercial area. Gonna be, I guess, it's right in line with everything else. Any other questions for Mr. Stroud? Applicant, Mr. Dudley? Anything? Oh, you've got someone else. I saw that you were the figure. Come on up and introduce yourself and where you're from.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Brent Wignell. I'm CEO of and managing partner of Wiggy Wash, from Spanish Fork, Utah. So local here.
Anything you'd like to add about this?
One, I think it's, we've worked diligently with Paul for quite a few months to make it to be the best scenario for the city as well as for the facility as well. You know, we take pride in the building. It's a beautiful structure. It's built with the utmost, with the top-of-the-line building materials. I think it's going to, we've got plenty of, as you can see, the cute stacking that we have, the onsite storage. We don't, that's what we really look for in our sites, that we don't have overflow going on to artery roads. And so we've got plenty of onsite storage. And like you mentioned before, lots of ingresses and egresses to suit the traffic that's coming through.
Any questions for the applicant?
I'm a little bit concerned, on the upper left, the exit there, it seems like that's only gonna get three or four cars, and it's gonna be, and it's gonna block.
Correct. Which is why we made that left to come all the way back around. I mean, we ate a lot of space to give our customers a good experience by giving them that left to be able to come around and go to that stoplight, or to be able to synergize with the other future developments as well as Target. Because we didn't want that stacking up and have the tenth person in line just pulling their hair out trying to get out onto Center Street. That defeats the whole purpose of our business plan and the experience for our customers.
Is this building gonna look similar to your building in Spanish Fork?
It is. The two, the differences between the two are, design is the same. The big difference is, is this is the biggest car wash in the country. You know, it's the largest tunnel car wash. So as opposed to having the one tunnel, as you have seen in your city with our competition, it's got two tunnels. So it can run cars simultaneously, side by side, according to the demand. So there is, that cuts down on our queuing or stacking even more. And then, like Mr. Stroud mentioned, our other two buildings are considered a flex serve, where they have the full service, very similar to the Supersonic on State Street. This location does not. We're just looking at the exterior express model for this location. And that's why we went, because of the traffic counts, the population, and lack of other car washes, that's why we went with the double tunnel, to be able to service the customers in the area and the vehicles in the area.
How's that tunnel length compared to Sonic, for instance, that we happen to know a little bit?
It is five feet longer.
Big tunnel, huh? And two cars simultaneously, cars pickups, either lane-
The first, first three lanes are designated to Tunnel A, and four, five, and six are designated Tunnel B. So anytime there's more than three cars in a lane, we're opening up the other tunnels.
It doesn't matter. The tunnel can handle cars, pickups, either one. You're not channeling cars in troops to different sides.
No, no. It can, and we've-
That'd be nice.
Yeah. So we've got, we can actually take with technology nowadays, we can actually take a wider tire than what previous car washes that have been built can take. I think they max out at about fourteen-five. Now, with the new conveyor we're putting in, we can take the largest tire on the market, unless they're off-roaders. But a legal tire, we can take any legal tire, street legal tire through that wash. And our heights are also take, as long as there's not roof racks, but your standard vehicle with lifts and things like that, it can be, as long as it's street legal, it fits through our wash.
Are you guys the owner of the property, or leasing it?
Leasing it from the Christiansons.
I congratulate you. There's something gotta be there. It's a nice project. I would have preferred something else there, like a nice office building for, but it fits. Just, I congratulate you for being able to negotiate something there, and, because that's been buried for a long time. And so-
Yeah. And I think that it, you know, with the amount of, with the lack of car washes that are in Orem, and the amount of traffic and the household incomes, the number of vehicles that the households own, it's very limited. Your typical industry is matching, there's a scenario in the industry where you can take, you know, main grocery stores, the amount of McDonald's, times them together, divide them by a number, that's how many tunnel car washes there should be in that area. There's four main grocery store retailers within four blocks. And there's only one car wash of this magnitude in all of Orem.
Right.
And so, this will definitely, you know, not only do we think it's going to relieve traffic off of the State Street that we know has become a problem, but we think that it's going to make the citizens a lot happier and give them an option.
You using radiant heat or something in this building for the floors and stuff in winter time, or?
We have, we do have ice melt that comes out on the front of the entrance and the exit to keep that black ice from building up as the water drips off. As far as heating the tunnel, we just have a tube heater that goes, an industrial tube heater that goes through on both sides for both tunnels to keep that thawed. That's what's worked for us for the past seven years at our other locations. And then, as far as the water coming out onto the rest of the property, we recycle ninety percent of our water. So the only water that is being replaced by the city is what is coming off in evaporation or being dripped off of the vehicle.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If you have come here to talk about this, the Wiggy Car Wash at this site, please come to the microphone, state your name and your residence, place of residence. If there's anyone here that'd like to speak to the subject, come on up. Well, seeing nobody here, I guess we'll close the public hearing. Come back to the commission. Any other questions, concerns, comments? A motion?
I will make a motion that we approve the site plan and preliminary plat of Wiggy Wash at Garden Park Center at 220 West Center Street in the C2 Zone.
Ms. Buckston's made a motion. A second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 32.
Item 32 is a proposed text amendment to the affordable senior housing over the ASH overlay zone. On the map here, the ASH zone, as you see, is everything there in the red crosshatching, parallel State Street. This was put in place a few years ago to provide a mechanism to provide housing for income-restricted seniors within ideally a walking distance or short distance anyway to most services that you'd find on State Street. So this is put into place. So as of today, there have been twelve units that have been constructed and occupied under this overlay zone. Four others' units have been approved, and we have four units now that are in the development process. Of those units, I looked at the plans today, the largest within a basement has seventeen hundred square feet and up to four bedrooms. We also have the PD-11 Zone, which is located there on 1200 South. That is property owned by Housing Authority of Utah County, but just as another location. It's not in the ASH Zone. It did come in as a BD Zone, but it is income-restricted housing that is controlled by Utah County. And I believe Utah County itself has approximately, and this isn't income-restricted, but just for your knowledge, I wanna say it's about ninety units in the city of Orem that the Housing Authority does have for all ages of people for housing opportunity. So we've looked at the ordinance, we've had some issues with some of the zones, or some of the developments that have been put in place with occupancy issues. Obviously, we think that if you have more bedrooms, you could have some occupancy issues, and that has proved to be the problem in a couple of the other developments. And so we've proposed some changes to the housing zone. The first one would be that the income of the residents is taken as combined. You can see on the red line, here on the screen, what were the changes that we're making. So if two people occupy the unit, we take the combined income of those two people. The other request was that, or excuse me, the other proposal is that the utilities be included in the cost of the rent. Now, that would not include telephone, but would include your other utilities to be included in the rent price. What else would be that, well, it's on the next one as well. Square footage, we did not have a square footage limitation. We feel that if you're gonna make something affordable, probably the first place to start could be with the square footage of a unit. Obviously, the bigger the unit, the more cost that's involved, and that could then lead to higher rent as well. So we've placed the limit at nine hundred square feet. Just for your information, the units, again, that have been approved are up to seventeen hundred square feet because they had a basement, and they are up to four bedrooms. And so we've also requested that the number of bedrooms be limited to two, and then get rid of the, excuse me, the option to have a basement. Again, the whole intent of this ordinance was to provide basic housing for those that are over age sixty, that do have, can have income restrictions, to give them an opportunity to have an affordable place to live, to put a roof over their heads. A couple of things that we look at in the ordinance, I've got two different charts here to look at. The first one would be the fair market rent summary, according to HUD. These are all HUD figures you see here. So fair market rents you see on the top. So for instance, a two-bedroom, which we would be limiting the ASH developments to, fair market rent for a two-bedroom would be seven eighty-eight. Then they'd also have to qualify under the lower table. And we figure that most occupants of any unit in an ASH, because it's gonna be over the age of sixty, most occupancies are gonna be either one or two people. Very rare instances, you may have more than that, or say, a grandparent has legal guardianship over a grandchild, or perhaps there's a handicapped child that the parents are still taking care of, where they would then be an occupant that would be under sixty, but because of the nature of the guardianship, they would be living there. So for the most part, you'd be looking at the one and the two, two occupant incomes, which then come in at thirty-seven-nine and forty-three-three. So the occupants would have to meet both of these requirements that you see here.
On that previous screen, you had thirty percent. So does that become that the rent is thirty percent-
Yeah, thirty, that's the-
Roughly fifty, forty-three, or whatever.
Yeah. The standard in the real estate is what you can afford would be a thirty percent of your income would go towards your rent or mortgage, or whatever it may be. That thirty percent isn't necessarily limited to the SH Zone.
My understanding was this is trying to bring it in line with federal laws or standards? Is that kinda why?
Yeah, some of this language here does. You know, the fair market rent is outlined in HUD, HUD standards, yes.
Okay.
When we're talking about units, do you mean a building, or are you talking individual apartments?
In what?
There's twelve units constructed right now?
Yeah, that's in two developments. One of those had eight. That's the ones up by the Catholic Church. It's on two separate lots, but each lot had four units, so there's eight there. And there are four units you see here on the map with the arrows-
Ones that are-
On 400 South. That was, one of 400 South was the first one. And that's the one that does have a basement. That's the one that has seventeen hundred square feet per unit. And according to the plans, up to four bedrooms. So then, if you go back to the chart here, and you look at a four-bedroom rent of thirteen-seventy-six, that seems to kind of defeat the purpose of trying to have something that's affordable. Because then you have to look at the chart below that, say, okay, if you have two people, their income is restricted to the forty-three-three, that could rent for that. And so we're just trying to bring this in line to provide the affordability for those units.
Made a lot more sense as we talked about that pre-meeting a little bit with, yeah, why the federal, sorry about that, the federal guidelines and that of what's allowed. I mean, the seven eighty-eights do that two-person deal. Other questions for Mr. Stroud? Do we have, is there an applicant for this?
It's Development Services.
It's the city itself. Okay.
One thing I did notice, I guess I didn't put it on here, was also the materials on the structure.
Oh, yes.
Red line, I had, didn't have that. But yeah, stucco or brick, a minimum percentage of brick or stone along with that. Now, if you're gonna put a multi-unit building in a residential zone, kind of makes sense to at least, you know, dress it up a bit. There's could be a bigger impact of that, that structure in a single-family neighborhood. And so by adding some architectural standards, we feel that that's in line.
That also allowed for Hardy Board, didn't it? I think this is the one we were talking about with that.
Yeah.
Is there, oh, go ahead. You go first.
Okay. Just a comment. You know, I think that we, the ordinance is already in line with federal and state standards, but a lot of these changes are really to alert potential developers of the requirements that they're operating under. So if you look at these two examples that are on the screen before you, all they really do are kind of point out clarifications to potential developers so that we make sure that they understand before they jump into a project like this what they're gonna be required to comply with. You know, this is an example, when you're talking about combined, or talking about income, you know, it's not really changing anything, but it's clarifying that we're talking about combined income, you know, not just one person. And so, anyway, just offer that for your information.
I guess I wanna know a little bit more background on the nine hundred square feet. I understand that you're saying it lowers construction costs, but is that too limiting? That seems a bit too limiting. And so, maybe just clarify that a little bit.
There are, we looked at different units, again, like the seventeen hundred square feet of the ones that have already been approved. That's per, excuse me, there's about, no, eight, eight hundred or so per floor. And those each have two bedrooms. So we thought, okay, you can do two bedrooms in about eight to nine hundred square feet. You have a kitchen, you have a family room, you have a bathroom. And so we thought that that number was sufficient to provide the needs.
Just a further comment. Maybe Jason wants to comment on this, too. But I think a couple of months ago, we did kind of an audit, if you will, of one of these developments that we have out there. And Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, but we had found quite a few violations, actually. And I think one of the problems that we came across was that, number one, owners were charging too much in rent, and they're trying to put too many people into these units. And part of the reason for that, I think, was is that they had built them so large that they needed higher rents to recover their investment, or to get a return on their investment. And so I think our thinking was, hey, these are designed to be affordable units. And one of the ways you accomplish that is by simply limiting the number of bedrooms, limiting the number of square feet. You know, if you make them smaller, then hopefully that makes them more affordable as well, and makes it less likely that owners are going to cheat, if you will, in trying to charge higher rents or trying to put more people into it. Also, that I think that helps to limit the impact on neighborhoods, because these are going in residential neighborhoods. And so basically, you're putting, you know, four units on one parcel. And so to limit the effects on traffic and parking and things like that, you know, again, making the unit smaller limits the number of cars. You know, again, this example of one of these projects we've seen before, we've seen a lot of cars parked out on the street. And so, you know, again, that objective is to, I think, try and make them more compatible with the neighborhoods they're located in.
It just feels to me, and all those are good points. I'm just saying, it's almost too boxed in. There's just, you're almost controlling too much of it. The income, the square footage, the bedroom. It's really, because I'm hoping that I'm, when I'm sixty-five years old, I'm mobile and I can use a little bit more than nine hundred square feet. Maybe limited to just two bedrooms, but maybe that extra space for storage, I don't know, it just seems-
Sell more cars, and your retirement will be a little bit bigger.
You gotta keep in mind, too, that this is just to fit a small segment of the income-restricted. I mean, most people I would assume probably aren't gonna fit, with their retirement age or six, are not gonna fit into that category.
Right.
But it does provide an element for them in that.
Okay. It just, it's kind of a catch-all for those that can't afford what's out there, otherwise, a single home or something like that. I kind, I agree with you, you know, that the number of the nine hundred, but they are gonna be limited, because if they can only get roughly eight hundred dollars from the federal government to rent it out, they're gonna be limited, the size they can build, to make money on it, to make it all economically feasible. Yeah. But if those developers who are going to build these places and know where the income has to be, and the rent factor's gonna be, shame on them if they build it twelve hundred square, you know what I mean?
They have to build it a-
They have to build it accordingly. Now, if we miss some, that's our inspectors, our building inspectors' fault for missing this, you know. But then, I mean, we don't, we don't regulate how much a guy spends on the place. I mean, doll it up all he wants, or- Yeah. But if he's already, if he's already constrained by the budget here. But it creates that other problem, I can see. And then the city is left to deal with this. And it creates another problem, that people are maybe cheating on it. That's the issue. Because then the guy says, well, I just gotta have more out of it. I'm gonna have to do something. And then it puts the city behind the rock in the hard spot, because it was affordable housing, and now it's just become, you know, whatever.
So what does the city do when the guidelines were not followed, and they're charging more than they should, and, you know, those kinds of things?
Well, you know, I think we've been mainly trying to get voluntary compliance. And, you know, it's, I think that when we've done this audit, we've relied on figures that they have supplied to us. I don't think we've actually gone and checked, you know, rent checks. Let's see copies of rent checks and income statements and tax returns. You know, that's, I don't know that we have the manpower to do that. So I think we're trying to build in as many controls as we possibly can to discourage, you know, cheating from occurring. And, you know, hopefully, by, again, limiting the size, there's gonna be less ability or less incentive to do that. And I think the point was well-made, that, you know, this is really applying to a specific niche, if you will. And so, you know, if people want more space, there's, I think there's probably plenty of options out there for them to go and find that. But, you know, we're really trying to deal with, find, or to create units that really do become affordable for people who are these low-income individuals. And again, that's what this is all designed to accomplish.
The restriction on the basements, I can see that. We talked about stairs and, you know, for elderly people, that that's not a good thing. But as we were touring these before, I was thinking about storage. And if you don't give them someplace to store something, you know, so they might need some square footage for that. And if it's not in a basement, maybe nine hundred square feet isn't going to be big enough that they could have some storage there. And I really think that that's important, because otherwise, if they're sitting it out in their yard or whatever, then we're causing even more problems in how it looks and that sort of thing, which is not something we want.
Is it my understanding, Mr. Stroud, that we toured some four bedrooms, and so they, at a four-bedroom, they'd be allowed this thirteen-hundred-and-seventy-six under the federal guideline?
Right.
But the big change in this is, they've got to include the utilities, which probably haven't been existing in the past, I'm assuming. That's why that's being put in?
Well, again, that's to put developers on notice, that under the existing guidelines, that's something that has to be factored into the rent. So it's not changing anything, it's just pointing that out for-
Well, for some of the renters, it's probably changing it, because they were probably collecting the rent, and the people were signing up for their own utility.
Right.
I'm assuming.
So when we said before that they had to comply with federal guidelines, probably most people weren't looking those up-
Sure.
-to find out that that actually includes rent. So, yeah, probably a lot of times, they hadn't been doing that. So again, it's trying to put people on-
But now the landlord's gotta pay the utilities, with the exception of a phone. Phone's your own problem, but gas, power, water.
You know, if I can just make one other comment. You know, I think most of the two-bedroom, we have a lot of apartments out there, as you well know. And I think it's pretty common for a two-bedroom apartment to be between, somewhere between eight hundred and fifty and maybe nine hundred, nine hundred and twenty square feet. And I just say that because I've lived in a lot of apartments. And most of those places don't act- And most of those places don't actually have storage. I mean, some of them have options for people to, you know, acquire storage, but most of those don't offer any additional storage to tenants. And so it seems to work pretty well for, I think, most apartments in the city that are, you know, in that situation, so, for whatever that's worth.
I want to talk about the exterior finishing materials. I think this is unnecessarily restrictive, frankly. My house has a lot of vinyl siding on it, as well as some stone.
And you like it?
And I like it, yes, and I think it looks nice. And it's not 40% stone. So I think we could lighten this up a bit, because all of that just costs money. Hardy boards way more expensive than vinyl. Brick and stone is way more expensive than anything else. I know this because we remodeled last year. And so I think that's someplace that if we're trying to, if we're cutting down square feet, I think we should make this more economical as well. It can still look nice and be economical, that's my point.
Do you have a suggestion on what you would recommend, then?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't take off any, wood, I'm not even sure, are we talking about wood siding that has to be painted? Is that, is wood and vinyl siding is prohibited?
Right. Upkeep. And most people don't do wood anymore.
Right. I don't know that anyone would ever do wood again, but, so maybe that's okay to take out, but I think vinyl should be okay, in my opinion. And I think the percentage of brick and stone should go down a lot.
Isn't the idea of this to kind of make it fit the neighborhood to some extent? Isn't that, because it'll go anywhere along those, those...
Yeah, you're basically putting in four units instead of one, and so it could have an impact on, on the neighborhood. And why not give it a little more architectural flavor?
Again, I think you can do that with less...
I mean, is it just, for instance, vinyl siding? Is that vinyl siding added to that? Well, you did say down on some percentage.
Yeah, but I think 40% brick or stone is a lot. Because, there again, just because this is fresh on my mind, we just had this giant project, and, you know, we've got four feet of stone on just the front, the facade of the, the front facade of the house, and I think it's decorative and it looks nice, and it's nowhere near 40% of my house.
Is there a percentage you'd feel comfortable with?
I, I don't know. 40 is a lot.
If you look at a house with a, you know, standard gable, you know, 40, 25% is probably the basic Wayne's coat, four foot, maybe? I'm just guessing here, but...
I don't know. I don't know.
If I understand this...
It's a lot, it's almost half, so...
If I understand this, there are four, four sides to the building, and each side has one entrance on it.
Correct. That requirement is there that each side has to have a separate, so when you're actually...
Be separate, so you really have four fronts.
Correct.
If you will. And so if there's a, I mean, if it's 40%, on one, one side, you'd be 40% all the way around.
Right, each side would have its own.
Well, this is, this will be a recommendation, so I guess we could make that part of the recommendation to the city council, that they look at vinyl siding and 25 or 30% or whatever figure that you're feeling comfortable with.
20, 25, that's what I would think. But I know it's hard to quantify when you're looking, you know, on the outside of a house.
Yeah, yeah. Should we have a public hearing, see what comments are, and come back and visit this on a recommendation? As a public hearing, we'd invite anyone who's here to talk to this subject, come up to the microphone, we'll open the public hearing, and if you state your name and address, city We know you. Welcome.
Thank you.
He's on the planning commission with us.
Yeah, good to be here. Appreciate this opportunity to speak to this. Even before my time on the planning commission, I was well aware of the ASH. I'm, as some of you know, in real estate, well aware of the ASH code and opportunity there. I think it is wonderful. I think it's desperately needed. And the demand, the demographic, demographic shifts in our society, yes, there's more and more need for senior housing and affordable senior housing. And I, so I, I love this, I fully support it, and want to see it, want to see the city do things that will continue to encourage that and accommodate it. I don't have any issue with the clarifications that were mentioned on, on the utilities and the combined income. My big issue is with the, the proposal for the two bedrooms and the 900 square feet. Those are changes, those are not clarifications, those are changes to the existing code. The summary is up in front of you, a three-bedroom unit that would rent for, I've done my, I've got a project in the works, one of these, and planning to do a three-bedroom unit, rent about 900 a month, done extensive market research, that's what the market I see will support, and sharing the utilities within that 900 a month. They pay some, I pay some. The, the total cost to the tenant is still well below the 30% rent guidelines, rent-to-income guidelines by the federal government. Their federal government standards that, that we're working off with here clearly allow for more than the two-bedroom rents. There is room in the three-bedroom rents, the four-bedroom rents, unless there's four, three, or at least three and probably four people living there, you can't justify the four-bedroom rents. And so I don't have a problem with that. It's the three-bedroom units, there's, there's need for three-bedroom tenants, people that want that, that can afford that, that still fit within the 80% income limits. My personal experience is that the city needs to do a better job of educating developers as they come in. The three developers that have developed, or two that have and one that's in process of those three, personal experience with two of them is that they didn't seem to really understand the details of the code. And, yeah, that's their fault, but I think the city needs to be doing better as well. I hope that, that you don't make the changes to the two bedrooms, to the 900 square feet, let the market decide if there's need for affordable housing with three bedrooms that are 1,000 square feet or whatever. Let the market decide. Don't do something that will kill the economic viability of these. Thank you.
What do you, what, real quick question for you, Derek?
Hey there, Derek.
What do you see happening in three-bedroom? Is that third-bedroom storage? I mean, there's, you don't really see six older people living there, do you?
Oh, no, absolutely not. I, I only see...
A couple?
Couple.
Maybe even a child that...
Very, very, very rare instance you would see a child or, you know, another...
Yeah, one's under custody.
Yeah, I, I, I see a senior couple, and as somebody who would develop this, that would, I don't want little kids living there, I want a nice senior couple that's going to have, like, wear and tear and will keep it clean and those things. So I see this really is almost exclusively for a senior couple. But I see a lot of people who want to have a craft room, computer room, that want to have room for some storage, that, I admit, I don't understand this, but I hear a lot of senior couples that sleep in separate bedrooms.
They do.
I hear a lot of that, and I don't...
They do.
Are you bragging or commenting?
Oh, no, I just don't, I don't get it. But I, I, I see that building in some flexibility, mine has, the third bedroom is, can be used as a den that can be an extension of the living room, if somebody wants a bigger living room. I've, I've designed in flexibility that the first bedroom is a good-sized, comfortable bedroom for a king or queen bed and furniture and all those things, just a nice, comfortable bedroom, nothing fancy. The other two bedrooms are definitely smaller, so they're not going to fit another queen bed in there, it just, it won't, you know? If somebody wanted to have a twin bed in there, they could, but it's going to be a computer, it's going to be craft room, those kinds of things, quilting, I don't know what... So I think building in the flexibility, that's, that's at least my goal, is to have that second and third bedroom for flexibility. And, and frankly, it does allow me to charge 900 in rent, rather than just limit it to 788. Because 788, my project's not viable, if I have to bear all the...
But 900 on something like that, as a developer, you feel like you could make it, pay the utilities, and make it?
I would, my, I've researched rents extensively, I think I could, and I, just as an, a multifamily owner, I'd prefer having the tenants pay their own gas and power because they, they can serve better.
Do federal guidelines allow that, Mr. Earl?
No, it's not allowed.
Well, I... To meet the requirements here?
I don't know, I don't know, that's a good question. I mean, they basically just say that rent has to include the utilities, and I guess there's different ways of structuring that. You know, whether you give, give somebody a credit, you know, towards rent based on their utility charges, that, that might be okay.
That's still, that's still coming out of your $900 one way or another. Well, or whatever the figure, it's 1082 for that two-person...
Yeah. My understanding, and I, there's, it's, it's suffocating all of this federal code. My understanding is that they, just like they have the, the rent limits and calculations, that they also do average utilities, and you can figure some of those things in, but I, again, I don't fully understand all that. It's, it's expensive, suffocating.
You know, it brings up a good point, and hopefully my in-laws are not watching on YouTube, because they live in my basement. They sleep in separate bedrooms. One does have cancer, so that's part of the reasoning. And so because of that, also when you come to the utilities, that TV's running all day long. So our utility bill in the last year and a half has gone quite a bit higher, because utilities are going, I mean, a lot more than you would imagine. And any of you guys can go look at my utility and say, you are not efficient, Carlos. But that's the, that's the real reasoning, so, those are valid points, and that's why I'm saying, you know, I think if we just educate and we, we hold them accountable, as long as they fit in the box, you know, if, don't limit the square footage and possibly don't limit that other bedroom, because they use another part of the house for their little office space. So that is a reality, so you brought up a good point, and I...
What type of square footage are you looking at?
I'm at 900 square feet per unit. I've packed it pretty tightly.
That's with three bedrooms?
With three bedrooms, correct. I, if I had plenty of room on the lot, I, I might consider going to 1,000, but I, the cost to build and the rent, you know, I wouldn't really get much more rent for 1,000 over 900 square feet. So I really, I've spent years trying to, to hone this in, is what's economically viable, what's going to be attractive to the market, to tenants, what's going to work, that I'll have good tenants, and I'll, I'll be able to make some money on this enough that it can be part of my retirement.
But you don't want the 900 in the, the code, in the text? I thought you stated that.
That, that's, I, I prefer that we let the market decide, let the developer decide.
Don't you think there ought to be some kind of a limit, though? I mean, these, like I say, these are being billed at 1,700, some of those we went in were huge, they were like colts.
I, I agree that those are too big. And I agree that the basements on those don't make a lot of sense. The cost to it, the cost and benefit return on it, it doesn't make sense. I, I've run numbers every which way, and it doesn't make sense. And I think somebody that's got $100,000 to $200,000 to invest into developing one of these ought to be able to figure that out, and ought to, I, I would like to see the city staff, you know, we, we're supposed to be doing these annual reports. The owners of these are supposed to submit an annual report on their rents and everything else. I think we could aggregate that data, and then developer comes in and says, hey, I'm thinking about doing one of these, and I'd like to do four bedrooms with basements, and they can say, here's our data, this is how much they're actually charging in rent, you know, this is how much they're allowed to, this is what they're getting, this is their occupancy rates, and the developer will say, oh my goodness, that is a bad economic decision. I won't do four bedrooms, and the basement is a hard return on investment, that they won't do that. If the city, I think the city can do more to educate and to, to, to steer that, that, you know, as I said, I've researched this for years, and so I, I've thought through and figured all this out, and, and I, I understand the city's concerns, I don't think that limiting to two bedrooms is the answer, limiting to 900 square feet, that's not the answer. I agree that four bedrooms and 1,700 square feet...
So there's got to be some kind of a limitation, though. So apparently you're saying three-bedroom ought to be the limitation?
I think the income...
In your opinion?
And the rent guidelines are the limitation. I, I think that's adequate, I think that's adequate limitation. But it's, it's, in my mind at least, pretty conclusively been shown that developers are not understanding that and are not, when they develop, are not planning to live with that.
Which, now going back to what the city's trying to, is they're limited to how they're going to monitor it and how to regulate this.
Yeah, they're monitoring a federal program.
So, I mean, a compromise, I think, would be good, maybe limited at three and maybe 1,200 square feet, I mean, that gives plenty, because if he's going to do it at 900 square feet, whoever's going to go up to 1,200 square feet, let's just say we say 1,200, I mean, he's going to have to figure out how to make that viable, or just say, hey, I'm just donating it, you know? But you add, add a couple more criterias, but be flexible on that. I mean, I, I think we can meet somewhere in the middle. I just, I think 900 square feet, and I'm glad you brought up that point, but then two-bedrooms is...
Well, we could pass that with a recommendation, we can throw anything in there.
Right.
1,200, like you say, in three bedrooms, and send it, it's going to go to the city council, they're going to make the final decision, and this is just a recommendation.
Is one of the problems, that, one of the reasons for the bedroom number was because of the income numbers?
I think the bedrooms were, was causing those to, to bring in more people, to help cover rent or get rent under the table, whatever it may be, but...
But then they're violating the...
The more, yeah, the more bedrooms you have, the less, they're more likely you're going to have more occupants. And the whole purpose of this is just to provide basic housing for 99% of the people are going to be one and two occupants. That's why we'd limit the number of bedrooms and the size.
Well, and, and too, if we think about, if you're one or two people in there and you have bedrooms, well, we're back to that separate bedrooms issue, though.
That's a reality.
No, I was, I, I understand, I'm not making fun of that at all, and I, that's...
My feelings are hurt.
No, 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 no! That's perfectly fine. I was just thinking the room that it gave them, but if they needed the separate bedrooms and they had the third bedroom, then you've got that extra room.
So from the Development Services perspective, the problem is enforcement, right?
Yeah, that's one of them. And like I said, the first two projects that are, that are built now, we've had complaints on both of those. We've had, had neighborhood preservation officers go out there.
You know, and these, these things, like anything dealing with, with, you know, occupancy and, you know, whether that be, do they have too many people, unrelated people living there, do they have illegal accessory apartments? These things are very difficult to enforce, you know? So if you have to go out there and find out, you know, do they only have people over 60 living there, do you know, they, you know, those things are just difficult. And I can tell you, when, when the Development Services did the audit of these units, it was, it was very labor-intensive, it took a long time. I think Jason can probably confirm that. You know, because you, you asked them for a lot of different documentation and information, and so, understand that, yeah, the city maybe could ideally, in a, in a perfect world, do more, but, you know, they have a lot on their plate already, it's, and so we're trying to build in some controls that will naturally regulate themselves, I think. And, anyway, I, I, I agree, maybe there's room for some compromise on this, I think some, some points have been very valid, and, and I don't know how Jason and Bill and Dave feel about this, but maybe, maybe you consider that, that three bedrooms is okay, but if you cap it at 1,000 square feet or something like that, maybe that gives you the flexibility to, to do that. Jason, do you want to weigh in on that? Jason, do you wanna weigh in on that?
I think it comes down to the, to the enforcement issue, and the fact that we're having difficulty. We only have two projects that have been completed, and we're already having issues. That's, I think, where we're coming from, is the fact that the more we can build into this ordinance, the less likely in the future we're gonna have 14 projects, and we're gonna have to regulate all 14 of them, because every year, somebody is in violation. And I think the more we can get these restricted now, do we, can we go to three bedrooms? Probably. Can we increase it to 1,000 or whatever feet? Probably so. But the, the more we allow more leniency, then the more likely we're gonna have contradiction with, okay, now we can have a three-bedroom at 1,148 dollars a month, but then we also have, if it's two people, they're still limited to the lower, you know, 80% of the income. So we're still gonna have some disparity between what they can charge and what they should charge based on the number of occupants in that unit.
Yep.
And so the more we can restrict that to be a more reasonable on both ends, the less likely we're going to have an enforcement problem. So, I mean, we're willing to, to compromise, that's, that's fine. We're just trying to get it to a, where we can, basically as Steve said, regulate itself rather than us regulating it every year. When we get the reports, somebody's bound going to be in violation, and that's, that's what we're trying to limit, basically.
But they, the owners do have to file reports?
They do. And the, the one tenant that Steve was referring to did file the report, and it was clearly in violation, and so
But the report's filed with the city, not the federal government, is that correct?
This is not a federal program, this is, I mean, they do have to follow the federal requirement, which is the HUD, but it's a city, city developed this ordinance. The city developed the overlay zone, it was a city-initiated project to come through that.
This is a public hearing, so let's continue on with that. Come on up and name and your place of residence.
My name's Bruce Dickerson, I'm on the agenda here in a minute. I live in Mapleton, but I think, I've, I've been doing this for 39 years in this city, and you've been awesome. But I think in trying to restrict this, I myself have looked at the economics of this forever, and they restrict me. That's what restricts me from doing, I've never wanted to do one of these, because it's just economically not feasible. And, you know, at the end of the day, you can put all the restrictions you want, and if people wanna violate them, they will. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. And 800 square feet, my units are less than 800 square feet, and I have a whole different market, I, I'm not renting, I'm selling, and people are living there, and there are senior people living there. And so, you know, I think the restrictions should just let the marketplace do it, and it will. I, I, I would ask, has there been a big problem? I mean, there's two projects that, I mean, how many apartment complexes are in this valley or in this city? There's the hundreds, aren't there? I mean, and we got a couple that are, we're having a little bit of a problem with. I, I just, you know, I, I'm in favor of letting the marketplace take care of the developers. They, they have in the past, and I think they will. You can have people go against that, of course you will. But those that are, wanna do this for the long haul, cities can't put enough restrictions on it to make them not get around something. That's my two cents. How'd I do on time?
You haven't been peeped yet.
Can I use some of this time for next time?
No, we
I cred, can you credit this for my time? I got a minute left on my time.
Your time is running right now.
Public hearing, is there anyone else that would like to step the microphone and comment? Well, thank you, we'll close the public hearing, come back to the commission.
Could I make one more comment, just maybe kind of response to, I, I think that we don't, you know, if we have developer, developers that are conscientious and responsible, you know, know the guidelines in advance and, and follow them, we don't have problems with those kinds of projects. I think what we have concerns with are with developers who don't necessarily look at all the requirements, who don't study it out, who don't examine the economics, and they might make bad decisions when they decide to put a project forward, and then they realize once it's built that it isn't working the way they thought, and so they need to cheat a little bit. In order to get the returns, they need to sustain their project, and I think that's the concern that we have, is that we want to, to build in regulations that, again, will be self-regulating. And, anyway, so, that's it.
Well, and along that same line, as far as letting the market dictate it, this is to help people that need extra help, you know, people that are low-income, and so there's gotta be some guidelines, or else then they're just opening it up to anybody, and that's, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Well, I agree, there's gotta be some guidelines, some, some maximum.
And we identify what the regulations are, just don't say, "You gotta abide by them." Actually identify some of these points, and so I, I think that's good, maybe we come to a compromise, I'm good with that, you know, upping, but upping the square footage and maybe adding the other bedroom, I, I think it, I think it makes sense to do that. It works, and, but still, there is now those two other criterias that are put in, or three criterias that are put in now that aren't there identified, so when they go into it, so I
So the, the question becomes here, do, this is gonna be a recommendation to the city council only, they're gonna make the final decision. Did you want to visit the vinyl siding and the percentages? That's one question. Three bedrooms is the next question, raise it to three bedrooms, and then what's, and then what's gonna be the square foot that we're gonna send through on the recommendation? Do we just say, "We think you need to look a little bigger"?
And are we gonna say no basements?
Uh, yeah.
Follow the no basement?
I'd leave basement alone.
Yeah. You would leave it
I think there ought to be
No, it, there is no basement in this.
Right.
Yeah, I
No basement.
I would leave, that's just
Apart from any bedrooms or any square footage, I, I don't think there should be a basement in a
With older, senior adults, it just doesn't make sense. It does, that's, that's, well, does somebody wanna take a shot at making a recommendation with those additional thoughts in there?
Or is this something that needs to be continued and redrawn?
That's something we could do.
That, that's your call, I mean, if you're ready to make a recommendation with changes you think would be appropriate, I think you, you probably wanna do it on the bedrooms, and you wanna do it on the square footage and the materials. You come up with something, you can, I mean, anyone can make a motion and see what the others think.
And vote it. Or we, yeah, we can talk about it, make
Hang on, so let's just go to these, the exterior here real quick. Well, before we even make that decision, I mean, do we actually know the difference in cost, really?
I don't.
And can that gentleman and Derek give us any input on that? Is there any?
Well, I mean, we're
Regardless of what the material is, I mean, if they wanna use party board or whatever, I just don't think that it needs to be dictated.
Yeah, it sounds like you wanna make, you don't wanna go with what, initially the staffer, where you're gonna make a recommendation, you, you could, you know, make it open to allow, you know, the other materials and, you know, reduce the percentage or not have it, that, that'd be up to you.
Do you wanna give us a quick comment, Mr. Dickerson, on that?
Yeah. My house is all wood, so I think wood's awesome, and that's the modern stuff today. And so, I, I, when you start over-regulating things, don't you think then pretty soon nobody wants to do anything?
No, but I, I think the idea that the city's got here is, these have gotta kind of match up into the neighborhoods, and so they gotta give at least a certain requirement. If they say anything goes, and, and the house is all stucco or all wood siding or vinyl siding, and everything around it's something different, that's kinda unfair to the neighborhood, and these are allowed in those neighborhoods. So I think we've gotta be careful that they match up to the neighborhoods.
So
That's the idea behind this.
Could you give yourself the power to, when they bring this in, that, that has to match up? Not that it's all written out every specifically, but
Well, it is, it is in every other code, Mr. Dickerson. When you build an apartment, when you build an apartment, there's percentages to what you've got to use on the apartment as far as metal, stucco, rock, different things like that.
But I have to submit my exteriors, what
That's correct, you do.
What it is, what it looks like, and that, and that's put in concrete forever, meaning I gotta live with that, whatever I do, correct, David? No, on what I'm doing, yeah. So can, we give the same power to the planning commission that you're gonna exercise on me tonight, the saying, "Okay, here's your elevations, here's your material, this is protecting the neighborhood."
But they're just reading the ordinance to that, and that's where they're giving you the figures for those materials, for whatever you're building.
We're reading the ordinance.
Well, that ordinance is created on apartments or condos, it's there.
He's saying keep it flexible, every neighborhood's gonna be different, anyway.
Yeah, let you guys have the power to do
And if somebody were to come in and build a single-family home in the neighborhood
I think
On that same lot, nobody would regulate their materials at all.
I think we're covered in this, that we say you can build with stucco, brick, that the biggest question was, did you wanna add vinyl, and did you just wanna lower the percentage a little?
But I, he's saying, why even put it in there if, if we
It's in every other code. Do you build a commercial building or a condominium?
These are going in neighborhoods, not for a single
Yeah, most commercial, in our C2 zone, stand, zone now, you don't have architectural standards yet, we're working on that, but not right now, but you have Steve looking at the special exception for multifamily dwelling, so if you wanna build a fourplex, you gotta find probably meet certain criteria, but I think there's architectural standards for the special exception, so if you're gonna build a fourplex, you could be near a single family or adjacent to some single family. I think there are standards in that zone to do a fourplex, the minimum materials.
I think what he's saying is, if the more flexible you keep it, it would actually blend in better with the neighborhood, or could, if the planning commission then sees the elevations and says, "This fits," or "It doesn't fit your neighborhood that you're building in."
Derek, while he's looking that up, one last comment.
Sorry, you, you asked me, so I'm taking the liberty of answering.
You said you didn't know.
I don't know, actual cost, my thought on this is that this ash overlay zone is 1,000 feet, I believe, on State Street either side, mostly no, older neighborhoods, there's a lot of brick facades or fronts, some are all brick, a lot of siding around the backs. I think 40% brick or stone all the way around the building is excessive. Having a nice front to the building is, yeah, I get that, but if the rest of the homes in the neighborhood are vinyl siding around the sides and the back, I think there ought to be some flexibility for a developer to, you know, I don't think we should, I, I don't see any value in requiring 40% brick or stone on the back of a home. I just don't see a neighborhood benefit or anything else. It drives the cost, it, it limits the viability of these projects.
Okay, thank you. Again, I just go back and say we send a recommendation through with some stipulations in there, but again, the, you know, the city council's gonna make the decision, we just wanna give them our thoughts and guidance. Anybody wants to take a shot at it?
I'll take a shot at it. Or maybe two or three. I will make a motion that we send a positive recommendation amending 2212-7 of the Orem City Code pertaining
2211.
22, sorry.
12, it says 12.
2212-7. Of the Orem City Code pertaining to development standards in the affordable senior housing overlay zone with the stipulation that we limit it to three bedrooms instead of two, 1,200 square feet, no basements, what am I forgetting?
I believe the basement is in that, isn't it?
Yeah.
No basement.
And, no more
Three bedroom.
And limit the siding to 20% instead of 40. The materials.
Materials.
Brick and stone to 20% instead of 40%.
What about the vinyl siding? He said
He said three, I didn't hear it either. Did you, were you able to get all that?
It's a lot.
The brick and stone, yes, yes, the designer materials, I missed first day.
And I think vinyl should be okay.
Mr. Bolton has made a motion, do we have a second? Did you want, did you say you wanted to add?
I don't think that vinyl to that.
Did you say vinyl?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, we've had the vinyl. Is, does, Mr. Moulton's made the motion, someone wanna second that?
I'll second that.
Mr. Galazius is seconding, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Yeah.
Any opposed? Passes. As a recommendation.
Could I just give a, a two-minute thought?
On what?
On, on the living accommodations and, and the two-bedroom.
Well, we're, we've, we've made a motion and passed it to three bedrooms, and so you'll need to, you'll need to bring this up with the city council at their meeting.
It's just, I, I just wanted to, to say that, to some of you, probably, three-bedroom is the minimal, but most of the stuff I had when I moved into, to my, to my place were books. I was storing my books away for nothing. I, I lost, I almost lost my life twice, and I was just carrying the books for, for no reason. So the two-bedroom for me, even though I could use more of the storage area, for me was just perfect before, because I was using just the things that I needed, not the things that I could store, so that's
There'd be a city, when will the city council meet on this?
13th.
The 13th of the month, you'd be able to present that, they will vote of September, excuse me, 13th September, yeah, it's gotta be ahead of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is well past 5 o'clock, and we'll move on with item 4.1.
No, you, you can, I mean, because the 4.1 was scheduled at, at 5, you could either choose to go into 4.1, then go back to 3.3, or if you
Oh, I'm sorry.
All vote to
Yes.
Follow the agenda, then
No, let's, let's, let's go into item 3.3, let's continue on in order, we, we're late, but, I'm sorry. Item 3.3.
Item 3.3 is a request for a text amendment to the PD5 zone. The PD5 zone is along University Parkway and Main Street. The map you see here, the property there in crosshatching, that is all the PD5 zone. Obviously, it's a, a big commercial, retail PD zone. The applicant has submitted, your staff report, there are three requests to change, that's now been reduced to two. They've taken out the parking change, so as you can see on the, the left of the screen here, the first change would be to allow SLU 5811, which would be fast food, basically something with a drive-through. Restaurants are permitted now, but they would be sit-down with no drive-through. The applicant is representing a restaurant that would like to locate there, they do have a drive-through, but they cannot locate there, and obviously because it's not a permitted use. So they propose to add 5811 to the permitted uses in the PD5 zone, and then they request to add the exterior insulated finishing system, the EIFS, and stucco as a finishing option for a building in the PD5 zone. Then, of course, the parking change then has been withdrawn.
Questions for Mr. Shroud? Everybody's getting really quiet. Is the applicant here? You would give us your name and your city of residence, and speak to the subject.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you. My name is Matthew Idema, I'm with Kim Lee Horn Associates. We are the site consultant for the applicant on this. My address is 215 South State Street, Suite 400, Salt Lake City. Given the fact that staff's recommendation for this is for approval, we would defer any further comments to questions from the commission. So, thank you.
Questions from the commission for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if anybody has come to address this subject, if you'd come up to the microphone, we'll open the public hearing, your name and your ad, and your city of residence. As I see no one coming up, we will close the public hearing, come back to commission. Comments? Questions, concerns?
I'm fine with it since they withdrew the parking change.
Yeah, I knew the parking was gonna, was kinda the issue that seemed to come up, and it's been withdrawn, so. Someone like to make a recommendation on that? I will make that recommendation, that we send a positive recommendation to the city council, amending section 22-11, I went down one further, Dave, or, Dave, yeah, 22-11-17 of the Orem City Code pertaining to development standards in the PD5 zone generally at Main Street and University Parkway. Twenty-two dash eleven seventeen of the Orem City Code pertaining to development standards in the PD-five zone, generally at Main Street and University Parkway. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mrs. Buxton is seconding, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, now it's past five o'clock, and we'll move on to, uh, item four-one.
Item four-point-one, this act, this involves three requests, this involves property at approximately seventeen-hundred South Sand Hill Road. The first request would be to amend Article twenty-two dash eleven by enacting section twenty-two dash eleven dash sixty, which would be the text for the PD-forty-seven zone. Then you would be amending the appendix by enacting Appendix QQ, which would be the supplemental materials for the PD-forty-seven zone. And then finally, the rezone of the property from PRD to PD-forty-seven. Uh, the aerial photo here to show you the property that's in question at this time, they're located between Sand Hill Road and I- fifteen. Uh, this is rezoned to PRD several years ago, uh, just, the, the city is divided up into two areas where you can do a PRD. This area between Sand Hill Road and I- fifteen, right now, you can do sixteen units per acre, the rest of the city, if you do a PRD, you're limited to seven units per acre, single-story, so the nature of this little corridor here, and a lot up along Twelfth West as well, has different standards for the PRD zone. So what you see here, this is kind of a, a comparison of the major changes that are proposed, obviously, right now, the, the PRD zone is in place. Uh, they're, the developer, the property owner could come in today, go right to site plan approval for sixteen units an acre, forty feet high, those building rights run with the land right now. Uh, they'd be limited to three stories and forty feet, setback would be twenty-five feet from Sand Hill Road, and property not part of the PRD. Parking requirements in the PRD is two-point-five per unit, one would be covered, uh, the same as the PD would be covered as well. Forty percent of the net acreage would be landscaped, and then, right now, based on the acreage, the density, you could get up to eighty-seven units right now as a permitted use at this location. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Dickerson, would like to change this to a PD-zone, which again, is a site-specific zone, Plan Development forty-seven. Uh, he would like to go up to twenty-six units an acre, that would then increase to four stories and sixty feet high, as far as the, the buildings go. Setback would be twenty feet from Sand Hill Road and eighteen feet from property not part of the PRD. Uh, parking would then be reduced from two-and-a-half per unit to two-point-one-five, landscaping would drop ten percent to thirty percent of the net area. And then with, based on the density calculations, he could be permitted up to one-hundred-and-forty-two units per acre. So these are the, the major changes, there's some, uh, minor stuff that's, doesn't change what, what could be built there, but this would be the, the proposed changes you need to look at tonight. I do have the entire ordinance on slides here, if you want to go through page by page, but this is the meat of it right here. This would be the site plan you see here. Okay, uh, one access off Sand Hill Road, uh, multiple buildings, uh, there is, there is covered parking, each unit would be required to have at least one stall that is covered. Uh, play areas, play structures, landscaping, uh, tennis, or, excuse me, it looks like there's a volleyball court, there's a basketball half-court, there are onsite amenities for the residents. Can visualize that a little better on the, the landscape plan you see here. One building would front up to, or, excuse me, the back of it would come up to Sand Hill Road, uh, the other buildings would be, you know, for the most part, quite a ways off of Sand Hill Road, or at least not the bulk of the building facing Sand Hill. That area you see in the lower right, that's white, that is a recent PRD development of, of two condo buildings there. That I believe recently just received all their final occupancy on those buildings. Proposed elevation is here, this is the, the twenty-unit building, you would also have a sixteen-unit building, obviously very similar, but, uh, one section, vertical section would come off to reduce it down to sixteen units. I'll just show you the sixteen, or, excuse me, the twenty-unit building for, for tonight. This would be the rear of the building.
What's the actual elevation of those buildings, the height? It seemed to me they'd be slightly under sixty, are they sixty feet?
Yeah, they're just under, is that in the report?
I don't remember from.
I, I believe it's in the report.
I know they wanted sixty. Okay.
And the side elevation. This would be the, the, we can go through each slide here on the text if you'd like, there's several slides to, to get the entire text in.
We've looked at this in pre-meeting, do you see any reason to go through the slides? Commission? No? No.
I'll go back to the, probably the, the bulk of what, what is being requested, would be what you see there on the left.
Questions for Mr. Stroud?
Is there a change in the material requirements on the exterior of those from what exists in the PRD zone?
Uh, it's changed a little bit, for the most part, each of these would require stucco, brick, stone, those types of materials, no vinyl would be allowed.
Thank you.
That would apply to both of them.
Any other questions? The applicant, Mr. Dickerson, if you want to come back up, your name and city of residence.
Thank you.
Legal told you you could.
Bruce Dickerson, uh, I reside in Mapleton, Utah, and my office is in Orem. Can I humor you for just a minute?
Sure. Time's yours.
I might get emotional, but whether you, however you vote on this, I'm just, I'm, I've been doing this for thirty-nine years. The first project I did in nineteen-seventy-seven in the city, Mayor Mangum was the mayor, and, uh, this is my last one, whatever way it goes. I'm done with the Olympics. It's been fun, and it's been awesome. I came out of retirement to do Villa d'Este, that's in North Orem. And the number-one tenants that we have in that project are young, single-marrieds. We sell the units, we keep the, and I would say ninety percent of them are young, single-marrieds. Another percentage are, uh, older people who have lost a spouse, and they want to live there, or a single, uh, woman or a man. Most of the tenants maybe have one-and-a-half cars, most of them have one cars. So we provided two for that, and we haven't even used up half our parking. The reason that I went forward and they talked me into doing one more was there was such a need, we sold that out in a year. And there's people here in the, in the audience that will, are waiting to find a place like this, this is affordable housing. This is what you're trying to do, I think, for the seniors only, the gentleman that came up here earlier with the, I don't know his name.
Harley Listarly.
There you go, he's one of the owners that owns in Villa d'Este. And so, this project came about because, you, you, affordable housing, if you try to make it everything for everybody, you, you can't afford it, doesn't work. And so, these families, I mean, there's a lot of them here, and I can have them all come here and bore you to death, testify to you that what, what happened in Villa d'Este is what this need would like to be. And so, that's what we're doing, that's what I'm doing. Nineteen-seventy-seven was the first time I came towards, again, up for the planning commission, Mayor Mangum and Randy Duchamp was the city planner, do you remember him? No, anyway. The funny thing is, I hired RW Davis to do the sewer for me, guess who owns this property?
RW Davis, yeah.
He's, he's deceased now, but isn't that funny how it all goes around, anyway, I can answer any questions, I'll be happy to take. But that's what it's all about, it's just trying to make a need, now, we have controlled the, the, the whole unit out there, and you can go look at the projects that I've done for thirty-eight years, and there hasn't been one that I'm not proud of, that I would drive you around and say, that's my name right there.
The one you're talking about's the one that's up by Winco?
Winco, yeah.
Yeah.
The one with, we had to do the ugly-looking building colors, it wasn't my choice, it was because of the CCNRs that the, the developer put on, which wasn't me.
Sure.
Of course, now that, now these people are gonna, they're gonna get mad at me, because they live in one of those, I forgot about that, I forgot they were here. Can we take that back off, Lori? Scratch that.
Hey, they can't give them back till you already sold them.
Yeah, they're theirs. I'm not here to do rentals, you know, these people come in to look at these, and then they go, well, we'll go look around, and they come back and go, there's nothing to buy. Affordable housing, this is it. So I think this is a great service that the city's letting this happen, and I would encourage you to let this continue to happen. That's all I have to say for this matter.
I know, I know, because I had a lot of BYU students that lived out there in your development and stuff, and so there's a lot of young kids, I get that. Um, I'd probably just like to start it off, I mean, you come through here, you're, and, and I'd just like your comments on this, you're asking for more units, you're asking for higher elevations, you're asking for the setback to be lowered, parking to be lowered, landscape to be lowered, which, and that goes back to the twenty-six units, makes the number of units go up. Comment on that? Just in general?
In general, you go back to affordable housing, what, what are the economic.
Max, maximizing your space.
Yeah, you, you just, it's, it's not gonna work, now, if you want to do some more apartments, or if you want to do something else that sells for two-hundred thousand, then you can do it. But I think it's worked really well at Villa, if you go out there and look at it, that's the same density, is it not, Dave? Does anyone know besides me? It's pretty the same density, and, um, so we're just kind of duplicating what we had there over here. So I'm asking for a lot, I know, but at the end of the day, I think, I don't think, I know there's a demand for it, and there's a need.
Well, I, I think there's a need in Orem, and I'm glad to see this as a condominium development, I agree with you on that.
I control that.
To sell it.
Yeah.
I agree with you on that.
And then, the other thing too, is to get FHA financing, which is federal housing, which you've talked about on this other project, even though it's a city housing project, it's, it's, you gotta jump through a lot of hoops to get there. And you have to maintain so many private owners, they have to maintain so many that have to be owner-occupied. You can't have investors come in, you can, but you have to maintain fifty percent or better owner-occupied. So at the end of the day, we have to, they hold our feet to the fire to make sure this is what we say it's gonna be.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Dickerson from the commission?
No, I think, I, my only concern, I, I like the project, I like, you know, I think it's gonna fit with, you know, by changing it from a PRD to a PD-forty-seven. The only question I have, and, well, even grave concern, is parking. We're giving you, the, if we follow the, what these recommendations, I think we're giving a lot, but I think the parking cannot be sacrificed, and so going down to two-point-one, if it is affordable, then these affordable people, or these people, the lower-income people that are gonna be able to buy these, they're probably gonna have a, people visiting them, you know, and, and so, I mean, the two-point-five is, I think is realistic. I know that puts a hamper on how many units you're gonna be able to build now on that thing, so if we give everything, and maybe a little concern on the landscaping, but we give everything, just work around the parking, so there's a sufficient parking for people to come and visit. Now, I know we've talked earlier about maybe compromising, but I, I think it's, that's scary, parking is, is an issue.
Can I address that?
Sure.
Sure.
You go to two, I have two-point-oh at Villa d'Este parking. The same amount of units, the same segment of the marketplace that we're going after, people come and visit. We haven't used one-point-five of that parking, and so, to give more asphalt, I think is not the right way to go, it's, I would rather have that in landscaping for those people to visit. And, and you've got ten or twenty people here, I don't know how many's here behind me, maybe they got up and left. Told them about the color of the building. But ask them if there's a problem with parking. Is, is it a real concern, or is it something that you think might be a problem? Is there a real concern with, with Villa d'Este, have you heard any problems out there?
I haven't heard anything.
That and that, we probably can't answer, it's been a huge issue at apartments, as far as apartments go, but I understand that you're saying this condo.
But, yeah.
Why not go back and revisit this then, and go back to the original acreage on landscape, and allow yourself a little bit of, uh, space if you ever had to, to put in some more parking stalls? Why not go back to forty percent acreage?
Don, what's the question?
Landscape, I'm saying, if, if, if you're saying parking isn't needed, down the road, all your condominium people are saying, hey, we're jam-packed. If you go back to forty percent landscaping, maybe at some point, that can, some of that can be taken back for parking if it was ever needed. Otherwise, it's the landscaping that was required before. What are you willing to do to, to, to come somewhere in that, like I say, there is, there's concern with parking, but I have to admit, I haven't been to your condominium, I've been there, I haven't looked at the parking.
Well, can I let some of these people address that concern?
We can, we can turn it over to the public hearing. Yeah, well, we can turn it over to the public hearing, are there any other questions for Mr. Dickerson, I guess we can always recall him?
Yeah.
Is there some way we can find out what the, um, density is at?
At Villa d.
At the other one?
Villa d'Este? You live down by there, don't you?
What is?
I used to live in the Italian villages, that's, this is.
Right next door.
Yeah, next door.
It's, it's, okay, you had a hundred, and, we got a hundred-and-sixteen units. I, I think it was twenty-four, twenty-six units, the acre, actually, what was it, does anyone know, Lori, where are you?
That's, I mean, this is fine, we can have.
The density doesn't matter, what matters is how many parking stalls you have per unit, that's the, that's the figure.
That's what, that's what most of the concern is, but does the height, is the height a concern to this commission? I guess we gotta get to public hearing and see if we've got some.
Say what they have to say.
Let's, yeah, let's, let's, uh, thank you, Mr. Dickerson, uh, this is a public hearing, um, we'll open the public hearing, what's our, what's our timer limit, is it three? Three minutes, there'll be a timer of three minutes, if you'd come up, state your name, city of occupancy, and, um, try not to duplicate comments that have already been made, but, uh, come on up front, and let's hear what you've got to say. We got a Lindenite here.
Made it all the way down, paradise, huh? Uh, my name is Jim Dane, I'm the architect for this project for Mr. Dickerson. I just wanted to clarify, there's been some discussion about this being a sixty-foot-high structure, it, it won't be sixty feet, it's ten feet floor-to-floor, plus the pitched roof, so we're, we're talking somewhere closer to fifty feet, I just, just wanted to make that clarification.
That's, I, I, that's why I couldn't figure out where the sixty feet was coming from.
We're not gonna be sixty.
Okay.
Just, just a clarification for you, thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Ex-mayor of Linden. It's good to have you here. Other comments?
Travis Jackman, I actually live at Villa d'Este in Orem, um, kind of, hopefully it doesn't count as duplicating, but in reference to people wanting to come and visit, people that live in there, my wife and I have lived there since the beginning, um, very rarely do we ever see more than, like, more than a friend or two come to somebody's condo. Because they're so small, these ones are eight-fifty, I believe, ours is eight-hundred, very rarely do we ever want to entertain people, since there is no balconies, there's nowhere to hang out. We, there's no really, like, hang out in the front as well, so we go somewhere else to spend time with somebody, we don't have anybody coming to us because of the size. So that's, I would disagree on that, that people would come to us.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jen Gerard, and I'm also a resident in Villa d'Este, and I just wanted to talk about how I've really enjoyed living there, I actually kind of fell into what I was going to run out, the second bedroom of a unit in one of the buildings, and then it ended up being such a good deal and an opportunity for me to build equity, that I ended up buying my own condo. So that's something that I've really, really appreciated, in reference to the parking, which seems to be the hot topic, uh, I think that two-point-five unit, two-point. I think that 2.5 unit, 2.5 stalls per unit is actually a good thing. I don't love having to walk far away to get to, or park far away to get to my unit. And it's nice that when I do have people come visit me, they don't have to park far away either. But then as far as the units go, like I think they're really well-designed, I love the kitchen, lots of counter space. And it's just like a really nice place to live, I really enjoyed it. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Kevin Warner, I live here in Orem, and I actually have been, my wife and I have been the sales agents for Villa de Este. And I've been there from day one. And we just sold our last units. And as far as parking, is, I promise you, I've never heard one, one comment from anybody complaining about the parking. It really, it's not an issue. And it's a, I mean, this project has been a godsend for a lot of, a lot of people. It's, it's a, just a great group of people that are mostly, again, couples, this is what Bruce has said, but it gives them an opportunity to actually live and own for less than what it would cost to rent. Thank you.
I am a resident of Villa de Este, I have a ground floor.
Your name, I'm sorry?
Oh, Joan Davidson.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. No, I, I came up here, I brought my son, who is Down syndrome, I had, and I put him into a group home. Yeah, I was kind of forced to do that because he was running away all the time, and, and I found out the, it, it, I could put him in one up here. And I have two other, two other children with families that live here. And so anyway, it's worked out good for me because he's just about four blocks over. It's a close run for me to, to go and visit him and take him and keep him with me once in a while. But I have never had any trouble, my kids, I have two big families up here, and I have others that come. I've never had any trouble with them telling me, I would say, where did you park? Oh, out there, next to the dumpsters. And I've never had any trouble. I have my own parking place, which is covered right in front of my, my condo. And I first came up looking for a place to rent, and either rent or buy, which was just beyond my limit. I, I, it was 100 and, what, anywhere from 180 to 200,000 to buy one. And so finally, my son-in-law told me to go into that place, and it was reasonable. My pay, I put a large down payment on it, which I would have with the house anyway. And it's been suitable. I have storage spaces, each, each closet has a, a double shelf. And I put a double shelf in my washing room. And I have a storage room for everything that I've needed. And it has worked out good for me, and are there any questions?
Sorry, no, I don't think so. But thank you.
My name's Travis Leifson, I live at Villa. I also work for the homeowners association, I'm the one that basically enforces parking there, I know parking's about been beat to death, but there's been no issues, I've never had to tell anybody, I mean, the peop-, there's been a couple times where somebody's had more than two vehicles, it's been addressed as soon as we've noticed it. I mean, it's, the way they're set up, I don't think it's, I would say, it's safe to say that half the people there have one car. Parking's just not, I mean, that's been the lea-, parking's been the least of the issues there. I think it's a good project, it's been a great place to live, I mean, I've lived there, I was the first person that moved in, I lived there from day one, and it's been, it's been a great experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jordan Egbert, I reside in the ugly colored buildings at Villa-
One of the offended ones.
Yeah, exactly.
Go ahead.
I want to address parking at all, but I think, the reason I like Villa de Este and the buildings that we live in are just because of the fact that it is easier, it is more affordable for us right now as a, as a young married couple to purchase a condo rather than to rent. And I think there's a big demand for it right now, just among my friend group, among people I know, a lot of people are looking for more units to purchase rather than rent. And so Villa de Este's been great, I have no complaints with it, there's, you know, it's a great location, the new proposed building is also in a great new location. And it, the size is great, everything about it is, is perfect for a young married couple like myself, so, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wanting to make a comment?
My name's Jay Henry, I live in Orem. And I'm the one that developed the project right adjacent to this subject project, South Point Condominiums. I don't disagree with what they're saying at Villa de Este, but I think a comparison would be if something is this close to UVU, as opposed to, I don't know where Villa de Este is, but I think it's completely-
800 north, 900 north.
Okay, completely different than where we are there. We have three stalls per unit. Granted, they're three-bedroom, but we have quite a large challenge with keeping parking even at three with the visitors and then assigned out. I know they're not condo, well, they are condos, and they're not sold, they're, they're being rented, some of them are sold and some are owner occupied, but not all of them, so that's a difference here. But I'm wondering how you would control something this close to UVU, selling for one thing, I, I understand the 50% that you have to have that, and so there'd be some efforts there, but, but renting them, I assume that you can still have three tenants per unit, even if they are, are they two-bedroom? I didn't hear-
Two-bedroom.
If they're two-bedroom, I, I assume the city still allows three per unit. I would be very concerned as a neighbor, but particularly as an adjacent neighbor, with allowing the parking to be reduced below the two and a half. I think that is a huge, huge issue with the parking. There's no parking along, you know, Sand Hill Road, you know, you can't do that. I don't know where they'd be, if they'd be over in some of mine, or if they'd be or in Walmart or somewhere else, but I, I agree that that's a huge issue. I also have concerns over some, some of the other reductions there, but parking, I think, is, is the biggest. And controlling it, you know, and Villa de Este, I, I don't disagree with what they've said, and if you can ensure that they're going to be owner occupied, or the majority of them, and that they're not going to be rented to students. My phone's been ringing, 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 we're, we're full there. We have maybe 25% students, we have a lot of other single professionals, and we have families. And again, some are owner occupied. But parking is a, is a big issue in my mind.
So is your facility an apartment complex, do you rent, or?
They're condos, where most of them are, are rented, yes.
And what was your parking standard on your development?
Uh, two and a half.
Okay.
But we, we have three, because we just expanded it, we had more land, and we-
It's, it's, it seems like if, if you have your two and a half, and this is 215 with bedrooms, it sounds comparable.
I, I think-
With two bedrooms versus three.
Yeah.
You know, if you see where I'm going.
The two bedrooms.
I, I do have a concern over parking, but of course, we beat that thing to death.
We generally on the, on the two, two-bedroom, we have some two-bedroom in our, our threes too, but they'll, they'll all have, you'll always have two cars, even in a two-bedroom, in my opinion. And then visitor parking, we've expanded kind of an accordion thing, added more visitor parking, trying to maximize what we can do there.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm interested, are there any neighbors from this development, we were just talking amongst ourselves that are- From the houses next door? I mean, I'm not going to beg, but-
Yeah, I have had a few phone calls, anonymous, didn't leave names or numbers, that they were, were against it, so I'd assume they're probably some of the single-family residents to the east, across Sand Hill.
I was surprised that somebody isn't here if they had a concern to voice it, but anyway.
We had a neighborhood meeting, one neighbor showed up, and she owns the porta-potties next door, and she just didn't want a building looking down in her porta-potties. Because she thought then, she's in the county, I guess. Is that true? Yeah, so she goes, if, if this goes in, then they're going to zone me out of porta-potty business. But how you control the parking is because you're selling the units and you only let two, the, the, you're not going to get three people in those bedrooms, nor would we let it, we have it in our CCNRs, we don't let that happen.
Well, as long as you control it, that's true. I was, I had worked with Belmont down in Provo, and what happens, and I assume probably a lot of this is going to do the same thing, you're going to sell this to families.
To young families.
Well, even older families, their kid's up to go to BYU, and they've got eight kids coming through the lines, it's cheaper to buy a condo than it is to rent. So they buy a condo and have their kids come up and go to school. Yeah, I'd be surprised if you had more than three in there, I had a couple of families that had three, but it was-
We don't even have any children.
Yeah.
We don't, it, it's just the, the, the size of the unit really-
Dictates.
Dictates what the, the parking is. And we had this issue when we did Villa de Este, because we went from two and a half down to two. Do you remember when we did that? And, and the comments that came were from Kirk Williamson, who owned the project next door where you used to rent, correct? That our tenants would be going over and taking up his parking. Guess what? It's the opposite. He's coming over and parking in ours, because we control it, we have two units, they're such small. When you start getting three bedrooms, and I know some kids that are moving into Jay's unit, and there's, there's, each three of them are moving in there, and they have three cars. But that's the difference, is the, the economics of the size of our units are to keep it affordable. I will tell you that I'm paying the same, if I get this approved, I'm paying the same price per unit for the ground out there as I am here. That's how this works. The economics of this has to be this way, and if it doesn't, it doesn't work. So we can increase everything, and we can make it whatever you want it to be, but guess who's not going to buy it? Me, and these families are not going to have a place to start. You, you have to maintain that owner occupancy, and it's also for conventional, for Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac. That's the difference between Jay and my project. I'm selling it, and it has to be controlled, and they get a report every time we make a sale. Not every year, every time we make a sale, they have, we have to submit a survey on how many are living here and how many are owner occupied, not investors. So you're not going to start renting it to students at BYU or UVU, if you do, there's going to be two, and that's it.
You don't, yeah, you don't.
Well, that's the econo-, the size of the unit, you, you go in and look and you'll see.
Okay, thank you. Another comment? Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Again, as the sales agent's been there from day one, I am not aware of one unit that has more than two people, as far as, like, three students in, it's, it's just not possible for the size that you have. There's two people in each one, but not three adults living there. I'm not aware of one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that'd like to make a comment for the public hearing? If not, we'll call this hearing, public hearing closed. Return back to the commission.
I just want to make a comment about the parking. We, we get concerned and sensitive about parking because the two things that we get yelled at the most about are when there isn't enough parking, and traffic. And so we have to really look at it and try to, try to make it work. One difference, I, a big difference I see between Villa de Este and this development is if there were a problem with parking at Villa de Este, they've got lots of places to go, to overpark, you know, park somewhere else. And this place, there's no place to go, you can't park on Sand Hill, that's just a disaster, and anyway. So I, and, and I know they're not the same thing, but we, that's why we get a little bit OCD about parking sometimes.
I think that, as, as I read this, there are two parking stalls assigned to each unit. Which, at 2.15, that leaves 21 stalls of visitor parking for 142 units, and that is just not enough. Do you assign, I mean, I know the covered parking you're going to have, they're assigned-
Covered and uncovered is, is assigned, but they don't use it, it's, correct me if I'm wrong, do we assign uncovered?
No.
No, we don't assign uncovered, so we assign one parking stall, so the uncovered. I just have to refresh your memory just a little bit, you guys came to me, meaning Orem City, and said, we want to reduce parking from two and a half to two for Villa. Because we can see that it hasn't, you don't need that much parking for this size of, this type of unit. Am I correct?
It was actually, Mr. Washburn came to the city and requested that change, we didn't go to him and request that change.
Well, nobody, I didn't request it, somebody gave it to me.
So Paul Washburn is the one that-
Okay, well, bless his heart. Because it works. And what can we do? Can I give you a $100,000 bond? If the parking doesn't work, you can cash it? I mean, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm not pulling your leg, I'm not here trying to do anything other than saying this parking works. It hasn't been a problem. Do you want to delay this and go look for yourself and see?
That was, that was an option we had that we could, term I want to use.
So this is just an all or nothing, right?
Have a continuance.
So, so all or nothing, right? So, what? Right, but this is a recommendation, based on what I'm hearing, it's all or nothing. Right. Well, and it, it makes sense for him if he gets it all, because it's economically, you know, I'm just, in every project that I've been involved with, especially personally involved with, there's got a lot of big, little bit of give and take, this is, this is great, great real estate here. And I think it's a great idea to do what you're doing, but-
What, what do you want me to give you?
I don't want anything from you. Not a dime.
Well, I thought you said there's a give and take, somebody, who wants something?
I think he's, I think he's going to tell you it's probably a compromise on parking, is that what you're trying to get to here?
Right, but what-
Let's compromise on something else, parking's not going to be an issue, I can guarantee it, money-back guarantee. Let's, I'll give you something else, what do you want?
I'm done.
Can I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Paul.
I think Mr. Jay, I forget your last name. Henry, thank you. I think he has a good point, you know, we, we need to compare apples to apples. It's wonderful that they're not using the, all of the parking that they've got up there. There's nothing worse than having too much asphalt in a development. There's also nothing worse than not having enough parking.
That's, that's the one that's actually worse.
Part of the, part of the apples-to-apples comparison, I think Mr. Henry made a good judgment about UVU being a lot closer, that's a lot different. The other thing, I know up by Villa de Este that there's a UTA bus route. Now, I think one of the things that needs to be considered, okay, is the transit service down in this area is good or better than it is up at Villa de Este. Not only is there a bus route, but what kind of service is provided? How often does the bus run? You know, does it run to the camp, you know, where does it run? So I think we need to, I think that would be a good thing to maybe ask the developer to do, to provide more information. And I, and I think I heard they have a requirement for a 50% occupancy from the owner. But to me, that means, okay, then 50% of them can be rented, and you can put one to two, two people in each bedroom. Another thing that-
Not, not in each bedroom.
Another thing that can be done, well, if you have a bunk bed, you can put two students in a bunk bed, stacked on top of each other. Well, again, if the-
You could have students sleeping on the couch.
If, if rent's low enough, I, I think another thing to do is to do a parking study and compare Mr. Henry's parking per number of beds to these number of beds and just say, okay, what kind of, what kind of parking in this area is something that's, that's needed? I don't think we quite have enough information to be able to make an informed decision about whether or not the parking is, is adequate. But I do think that we have, that our concerns, that it might not be enough are probably valid.
Well, there's, there's no reason this couldn't then be continued to two weeks, right? I mean, it, the, the fifth is open and available? Oh, yeah, it's actually three weeks, isn't it? It's a long month, the way it goes.
Here's, here's another.
That applicable to you because, I mean.
This is another thing you need to consider with what Paul's saying that's different than mine. Matters, it matters not the location, close to UVU or not. If I'm going to get close enough to UVU, then, and I'm only going to let two kids in an apartment, I got a homeowners association. I monitor this. There, this young man that spoke, he takes, he's over there all the time. It, it's, you know, I know Jay has a parking because I've talked to the kids. I'm in that state down there and I know that there's a parking problem there and he's got more parking for him. But this is controlled by a homeowner. So yeah, you're going to let investors come in there, but still, you can only, you're only going to let them have two parking stalls at the most. That's all that.
Well, yeah, we, and we hope that. I think he's got a valid concern if, I mean, this will give us a chance to come down to your, your Villa de Este?
I don't speak Spanish, other than hola.
Hola, ¿cómo está? And, and we could go down and look at that at, at some point, this group, each individually, I guess, but look at that, check the bus routes and, and, and then reconvene this on the fifth and then face that. By the way, I was just going to ask you a quick question. Do you bus all these guys in?
No, I pam.
Yeah, I, yeah, I knew you was going to say that. But I, I guess that would be my thought. The commission here?
I think that, I don't have a problem going down and looking at it, but I think Paul's recommendation is that the developer ought to gather that information and provide it as far as bus routes and that sort of thing. Is that what I understood correctly?
That could be part of the.
So that we don't.
Yeah, and not only the bus routes, but where are the bus stops and the frequency of buses? And then where do those routes operate between the cities?
So it just becomes part of.
And, and that's one of the, that's one of the issues to compare when you're trying to compare apples to apples. And, and then another one is, you know, can maybe some of these HOA regulations actually be put in the PD code so that we're kind of double, double-covered? Just so that, let's say in the future, the HOA decides to change their regulations, but there's nothing in the code that, that.
Mr., Mr. Earl's saying no to the side of you.
Okay, well, and that, that's part of the problem. I mean, if, you know.
Legal.
Somebody, yeah. Somebody in the future can, can change what those HOA regulations are.
I disagree with that. Because this is why I disagree with that.
Guys, okay.
This is the only reason, because if you're going to keep your financing available, you got to keep those HOA regulations the way it is.
Okay, we've closed public hearing. Let's, let's have the commission. Let's make a recommendation here, guys, and we've closed public hearing. Do we need to have, do we need to have anything else heard? Does this group?
I, I would like to hear, yeah, the traffic consultant, he might have some ideas about a, a parking analysis or a parking study that might help us.
I've commissioned him to get a parking study by the next meeting.
Okay, well, so he just didn't tell you. Cordell Brayley with RSG in Salt Lake City, Utah. And like Paul said, that's information that we can get by the next meeting to help.
Okay, well, it'll be the fifth of September is what I'm hearing. Seventh, is it? Boy, I gotta look at a calendar better, don't I?
Fifth is Labor Day. That's barbecue at his house on the fifth.
There you go. Okay, well, let's, let's make a recommendation of what we want to accomplish here and let's.
Bring up the slide that has the before and after. There you go. I, in my opinion, keeping the parking at the 2.5. I'm not wanting to give up so much of the landscaping also. I'm, I'm thinking, keep it with the 40%. I wasn't in favor of the four stories, but I'll, I'll compromise on that. That's just my thoughts.
I heard some others say they'd compromise two and a quarter stalls and, I mean, let's get a feeling here what everybody's thinking.
Look, I, I'm the one who brought up the parking because I deal with it in the business that I'm in. And I know it's a different kind of business, but I like the project. I like the idea. I, I'm, I'm good with the zone change. So let's go forward, but the parking is an issue. What that magic number is, I'd hate to bring it down to 2.5, but bring it down from 2.5. I'd hate to do that, but.
But keep it there.
But maybe these studies come up with something, but to think that it's going to go down to 2.1, I, no, but I'm just the people, just one.
Well, let's, let's make a recommendation, guys.
I thought we were going to continue it.
Yeah, that's what, well, I thought recommendation.
Can I make a motion?
Well, there's a couple of things we, there's a couple of things we got to accomplish in that.
Right. I make a motion that we continue this item to the September 7th meeting based on the fact that we'll receive from the owner a parking study, parking trans slash transit study. What else did we need to add?
UTA. Transit.
Transit.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, that's my motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second. You got that? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll continue on September the 7th. So, okay, we're at the end of that part of the meeting. Minutes, I'm sorry, I wasn't here the last one. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes? Being as I wasn't here, I can't approve them. Is there any problem? I know you talked to.
Yeah, there was just, there was one little.
Laurie about some, and those got changed. Okay. Any other problems? Anybody want to make a motion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last meeting, August 3rd.
That August 3rd, last meeting? Do you have that, Laurie? August 3rd? Okay, August 3rd. Second?
I'm second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Director's moment? Moment? Update, I know.
Sure, the meeting hasn't been long enough, so let me go on a little bit. I'm sure none of you noticed any construction in town.
No.
On roads. None of you. See, I knew it.
Yeah, you're not getting any phone calls.
Knew it. So what?
Sam wouldn't even come into defense.
Yeah, Sam, Sam's answering phone calls from angry citizens. So people complain that our roads aren't fixed and so we've had some pretty lean years during the recession and we had very little money to work on our roads. We've been out of the recession now for a couple of years and we are very fortunate this budget year to have a considerable amount of money, a lot more than we've had in, in probably eight to 10 years. And so we felt it necessary to put a lot of that money into our road projects. And so we're trying to, if we can maintain these roads with these slurry seals, these micro-surfacing and center street, the complete overlay, it won't cost us as much money down the future to have to replace the road completely. So please be patient, that your roads will be very smooth soon and the cones will disappear in about November, December. And then they'll be back out next year. So just wanted to give you an update on that. That's, that's why you're seeing so much done. We typically had, I think last year we had maybe $300,000 for roads and this year is close to 5 million. So.
Good.
But they did center street and then they came back and reworked it.
Yeah. So typically when we put piping in a street, we don't want to overlay that street until it, it has a year to settle. Now, there's other construction methods where you can put, there's a, a concrete you can put in there that will, will, so it won't settle, but it's expensive. And then later you have to come in and if something happens, you've got to dig through that to maintain the piping. And so we choose to save that money and, and put more into slurry seals and stuff like that.